Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2019. First order of business today is the following public hearing. It's a petition of the Surgery Center of Lynchburg to rezone approximately five and one hundredth of an acre at 2401 Atherhold Road from B-1C Limited Business District Conditional to B-1C Limited Business District Conditional to amend the existing proffers and to allow future building and parking lot expansions.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm as a Planning Commission. This is a petition to rezone the property to amend previously approved proffers. They were approved by council back in May of 2002. The property is recommended for mixed use on the city's future land use map. It's located in an area that is predominantly office buildings and some institutional-type uses. The amendment to the proffers would allow for the expansion of the current building. You see there are two future building additions and two parking additions that would also be proposed. Stormwater management would be handled by the existing bio-retention, a future detention basin in this area, and also underground stormwater detention in this area. Stormwater quality would be addressed by the purchase of off-site nutrient credits. So the only other proffer that was attached to the 2000 rezoning was a dedication of right-of-way for the future extension of Atherhold Road. They have obviously complied with that, and the road has been constructed to this point. So the planning division does recommend approval of the rezoning to amend proffers.
Great, thank you. And who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you please come forward, sign your name, and I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andy Kleepack with Hurt &amp; Profit here in Lynchburg. And as usual, the planning department's synopsis of the project is very thorough. I have very little to add. I'll just note that the parking addition in the northeast corner is really the emphasis of the Surgery Center's efforts in getting this rezoned. And really, the only reason we're here is because that original site plan was proffered. The building additions are more conceptual of this nature. We're not sure exactly how those will shake out, when they would be constructed, and the exact nature of the size, the footprint of them. But because we're going through this process, we wanted to give you the best idea of what the Surgery Center thinks their future needs will be. So with the parking addition, there's very little traffic anticipated, if any at all, mostly because it's really just providing onsite parking for people who are currently forced to park on the street or park off-site. So hopefully, none of you have had to visit the Surgery Center recently, but if you had, it's a very full parking lot. So they're trying to get that done first. That really is it as far as what I have to add, but I'm open to entertaining any questions you have. Thanks.
Okay, great, thanks. Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor of this petition? How about opposition? Anyone in opposition? Okay. Well, we can then close the public hearing and discuss. Any comments?
My only question is, you're on that whole area down there at the bottom of Atherhold, gotten a lot of asphalt and a lot of development, but you're not putting your stormwater management until later on. What's the thought process behind that?
The stormwater management would go in as each phase goes in. So the parking addition to the northeast has actually already been, we've prepared the full site plan, and it wasn't until that point that we realized that there was this proffer, so.
Did I misunderstand? You said that's the parking addition you're going to put in first. I was looking at the one.
No, that one would just go in if that building.
I misunderstood. That's perfect. Since you're right there next to that Blackwater Creek trip, you know, just ask that question. Other than that, I'm in favor.
Just to clarify for me, we're really discussing a change in the site plan, but the petition is asking for a rezoning.
Well, it has to be rezoned because it's amending the proffer.
Okay. Thanks. That's what I thought. It's just confusing the way it's coming across.
Yeah. I think it's a, be a nice addition when all done. The underground stormwater management, that's going to be installed as you build.
That would go in with that initial phase, yes.
Yeah. Anybody have any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion if we approve the recommendation as written.
Second?
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that carries through, and thank you. Hope that works out well.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great. The second order of business is the public hearing on a petition of Linvett LLC for a conditional use permit at 802 Wigginton Road to allow the expansion of a veterinary office in a B3 community business district. So who will be?
Sure. Members of the Planning Commission, this petition proposes to amend a previous conditional use permit that was approved by council back in March of 1999 to allow the construction of a 2,250-square-foot building. At least, the floor plate would be that size. The property is ZONE B3 Community Business District. It was rezoned that way as part of the Northwest Expressway Study back in 1989. The veterinarian hospital is a well-established use in that area, and this addition should have little to no impact. Adequate parking is available both onsite and across Mercury Street in a recently constructed lot. Stormwater management would not be required as the proposed addition is below the 5,000 square-foot threshold. The planning division does recommend approval of this conditional use permit.
And is there anybody here to speak in favor of the petition, want to present that? Sorry.
My name is Jamie White with White Engineering and Design. I've been working with the owners on this property to do a building expansion. Their business has grown to where they could accommodate additional exam rooms and office rooms for treatment of pets. I know a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, they did do an expansion across Mercury Street for additional parking. And where we're looking at placing that building right now is in a current parking area that they use now, but we're adding a couple of spaces that were in our onsite, and then the additional parking that happened with the parking lot across Mercury Street provides for adequate parking on the site. It's a very minor site plan going through the TRC process. We are reconfiguring. They have a yard area that's fenced for activities with the animals as they're working with them. That gets modified with the fencing a little bit to accommodate for the building expansion. And that's about it for this project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thanks. You might want to stick around. Anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Or anybody opposed? Okay, well, we can discuss any questions we might want to present.
To have a quick disclosure, we do use Peak Two as a vet for vets, for our pets, and I spoke to the city attorney. It's not an official conflict of interest, and I'm confident I can assess the petition This one also seems pretty straightforward to me.
I agree.
It was interesting to look at what we looked at a couple of years ago, a few years ago, all done in the berm and the greenery and everything.
There was a comment about the need to address the flume down the road because the changes going on, but sometimes we do that at the same time. It's just not, that's a bigger ticket item to look at down the road.
I'll make the motion that we approve the petition as written.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to add before we vote? All right, well, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, carries. Thanks, good luck, and hope that gets going well. All right, our third order of business is a petition of Willoughby Properties to LLC to rezone approximately 196 thousandths of an acre at 1,000 Court Street and 210 10th Street from B1 Limited Business District to B4C Urban Commercial District Conditional to allow the conversion of existing dwelling into apartments.
As a Planning Commission, the structure is located within the Courthouse Hill Local Historic District as well as the State and National Courthouse Hill Downtown District. The property contains a two-and-a-half-story with a basement wood-framed brick veneer structure that was constructed back in 1907. The building contains a little over 6,000 square feet. And if you remember, a few years back, the building actually had a structure fire in it, and it's very nice to see some proposals to bring it back to its former life. The exterior renovations have been reviewed by the city's Historic Preservation Commission with the granting of a certificate of appropriateness for what's proposed. The developer does plan on using state and federal historic credits, which will ensure compliance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards. The property is recommended for a downtown use on the city's future land use map, and the proposed residential use of eight apartments should fit well into the downtown area as well as with Court Street, which contains a mixture of office, institutional, and residential uses. The petitioner has voluntarily proffered to provide off-street parking in nearby lots, and the planning division does recommend approval of the rezoning.
Great, thanks, Tom. Okay, anybody here to speak on behalf of the project? Please come forward, sign your name, state your name, and.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Anna Chitla, the owner of Willoughby Properties. I did prepare some remarks with an overview of the project, but Mr. Martin has always done a very thorough job, so I don't want to repeat the same thing. Let me just add two points that perhaps were not obvious from the application. I asked for the rezoning from B1 to B4 because of a bit of a quirk in the language in the city's zoning ordinance, and although B4 is quite permissive as to the possible future uses for the property, I only intend for this to be a residential building. This is why I proffered that the property will be developed in substantial compliance with the site plan. I debated whether to put in seven or eight apartments in there, and at the end of the day, it's going to be seven. So the plans have all been drafted, everything has been submitted to the State Department of Historic Resources, and we're expecting approval in about a couple of weeks if all goes well. And then we'll do the federal stage, and I would like to start construction sometime in May. The second point that I want to make interesting, someone put me in touch with the last owners that resided at the property, and they told me that this was actually an apartment building for a few decades. It was actually seven units. And they bought it, I don't know what year, and converted it into a single-family residence. So it has lots of bathrooms, and it really does lend itself to division into seven units again. So it's going to revert to a multifamily dwelling that it was for many years. My main interest in this property is to maintain it as a residence and preserve its historic value. It has very nice garden in the back that we plan to restore fully, and I think it's going to fit very nicely with the neighborhood, especially when the upper bluff walk is constructed in the future. So we're very much looking forward to getting started, and I hope that the application will be favorably received.
I might want to stick close because we'll probably have more questions. Anybody want to speak in favor of this? Great, okay.
I'm the next door property owner.
You can just come forward, please, and state your name and sign also.
I own the building on the right, so I'm basically totally in favor of everything that she's planning on doing. I think it will be great to see what she does. She's done really great projects in the past, and really looking forward to see what she does with this. So I'm in full approval of whatever she wants to do.
What was your name again?
Jonathan Baker.
Jonathan Baker, great, thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, anybody else want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in opposition? Okay, well, we can enclose the public hearing and have our discussion here. I'd like to say, first of all, you know, having lived close to a property that's being developed, I remember when this caught on fire, and I have been in it before, and the, I remember when it was, you know, I heard about the fires, like they're going to have to tear it down. And it's an amazing building, so I'm really glad that somebody is stepping forward to do something. And I've been really impressed with the work Ms. Chitla has already done on another historic property on Rivermont. It's been pretty incredible. And also, to see it stick through along the timeline, which is really nice. So very supportive of things like this.
Yeah, I was in the building back in the early '80s when the Johnson family owned it, and it has broken my heart to see that building deteriorate. So when I saw your petition come in, I was ecstatic that you were going to, you know, renovate the building. And just like Chairman Rogers said, I know you're going to approach it with the same quality that you've done with the property on Rivermont Avenue, the Seven Hills School. So I know there are a lot of people that are downtown on Court Street are really excited to hear that we're going to get this building back. So thank you for stepping forward.
I've got a question. I'm happy to see you're going to provide off-street parking. So where are you going to get that, from the Baptist Church, or?
Yes, there are several options. I think the best one is the Baptist Church. They have plenty of space and are more than willing to let me have six to eight spots. There are also some buildings across the street that have spare capacity. Tom Liebrich is one of them. There's also the city lot that's two blocks away, which is not ideal, but that's also a possibility. So there are several options.
Yeah, somebody from First Baptist told me they were ecstatic, that quite candidly, they were going to get something worked out with you, because Billy Harris, when there was a law firm in the building Mr. Baker owns, he rented spots from First Baptist, so.
I was curious about the upper bluff walk. You know, I know there's a walkway that goes behind the courthouse and continues up that way. Is that something that is intended? Is there a public right-of-way behind this house? There's an.
It would have to become one in the future. The upper bluff walk has been in the downtown plan since 2000. Obviously, it kind of mirrors the lower bluff walk, but serves more of a passive recreational-type use. You know, when that would be constructed, it would be in the outlying years, probably 10 to 15.
I was just going to say, I went down there Monday and walked around this property quite a bit, up and down 10th, looked around the backside of it, and just visualized how the building used to look years ago, what's happened to it recently, and looking at anticipation to what you're going to be doing to it. I was just looking at the fine details of things that you will have to do, and I said, wow, thank you, thanks somebody for seeing the vision of what this building can once again be and bring additional beauty to our downtown area. So my hat's off to you.
I'm very much involved in it.
All right, well, any other comments? Thank you for bringing that forward. Does somebody?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we accept the petition as drafted.
No other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Carries, thank you again, and looking forward to seeing it change and have people in it again. Thanks. Okay, our last order of business, it's under new business, and it's not part of a public hearing, and I'd imagine, Tom, you'll discuss this, but it's a consideration of initiating a future land use map amendment to change the flume designation from high-density residential to low-density residential at 600 Elmwood, the Oddfellows Home area.
Sure. So Ms. Nancy Allen requested to come speak to the Planning Commission concerning the future land use map designation for this property. The zoning ordinance states that either the Planning Commission, City Council, or the owner of a property may request future land use map changes or zoning ordinance amendments. Ms. Allen is obviously neither of those, so I believe her request to you today is going to be to initiate a process to amend the future land use map for this property. What I caution you about is that I believe her request is based on some development proposals that are yet to be submitted, and I would caution you not to be conducting a public hearing about something that has not been submitted yet. Also, while we understand and actually share many of the concerns that Ms. Allen has presented to you in her letter, we do not recommend that the commission initiate a future land use map amendment on a single piece, a single piece of property by anyone other than the property owner. If the commission chooses to do an area study or look at the future land use map as a whole, that may, this may be a piece that you would want to look at, yet we do not recommend you do it individually. Ms. Allen would like to address.
Okay. So then, Ms. Allen, if you could please come forward, and you can sign your name, state your name, and tell us what you were thinking.
Actually, I wasn't planning to address you, but I had written the letter and the attachments that I think you all received, and it's, and the letter is written not just on my behalf, but on behalf of our neighborhood in the area of Elmwood, Maidwood, and Brunswick, the area that's sort of hugged by the Oddfellows property. And the Oddfellows property is currently for sale, and that precipitated our concern about the designation on the city land use map of high-density development. We feel it's not appropriate for high-density development, and that's why we brought it before the Planning Commission to consider changing that designation. It's not appropriate for a number of reasons that I listed in the letter, the effect on property values in the neighborhood, the traffic in the neighborhood, the access to the property, the topography of the property, and the environmental impact, its relationship to the Blackwater Creek Trail system, to the Blackwater Creek itself, the possibility of noise and light pollution in the area. The Oddfellows brought a zoning variance proposal in 1983, and I attached the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting to our letter, and those concerns brought up by the Planning Commission at that time are still concerns in our area. So it's not a letter just on my behalf, but on at least 100-plus homeowners in the area. And it's a very interesting part of the city that we would like to maintain as it is. It's a number of smaller, well-kept homes, it's an integrated part of the city, it's a very cohesive neighborhood, and we've worked together for this, in writing, in drafting this letter to the commission.
Great. Thank you for sharing that, and I understand the not wanting to have a public hearing on this because there's not really any kind of proposal. I was curious, the majority on that map, how much of that is R2? Significant portion, right?
Well, the, everything except the, I'll point to it, you can't see. This small piece, which Ms. Allen referred to, was rezoned back in 80, was it 83? Is that what it was?
Correct.
And it allowed a cottage-style development. It was more geared towards the retirement home than the normal apartments. The future land use designation that's on the map today is, has existed there since Prior to that, it was designated for low-density residential uses. The assumption I'm making is that they designated it to high-density residential use because of the Oddfellows Home and the colleges. Now, that being said, whether, you know, is the property appropriate for high-density residential uses right now? Absolutely not. I'm giving my opinions, I guess they're professional, but whether or not, you know, typically, you would not want vehicles traveling through low-density residential areas to get to the higher-density residential areas. You'd want the reverse to occur. So that being said, this may be appropriate to look at in the future as part of an overall map amendment or study of the area. If someone was to come in for a rezoning of the area, you know, obviously, traffic and the other impacts that Ms. Allen referred to would definitely need to be addressed if they could. So again, staff shares all the same concerns. We just believe it would be, you could, but do not believe it would be appropriate to do it on an individual basis.
Tom, just that little pink section that's R4C, right? And that was, you think, done because they were planning to do cottages?
It was.
But that would be for elderly, was it?
That's the way it was billed, and I believe it was limited to like 28 or 29.
Was that the condition?
Similar to what you see out at Westminster.
Right, right. And so that wouldn't have been a lot of trap, high traffic.
No, absolutely not.
Because elderly people don't tend to drive around as much, but, or go to work every day necessarily. But what is the C in the condition? What is the condition?
There were proffers that it would be developed essentially as the cottages and limited them. Yeah, they had some photographs, I can.
And that condition still exists, and so if somebody wanted to come along and develop that as cottages, they wouldn't have to be for elderly. They could be for college kids, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'd just say, Mrs. Allen, your letter was very, very well done, and it was one of the better letters that we've gotten. We've gotten a lot of good letters. We've gotten a lot of good letters and comments from individuals on petitions before, but yours was an excellent letter. I share a lot of the concerns. Mr. Martin expressed his opinion. I always like it when Mr. Martin's opinion and my opinion are on the same wavelength, and especially when it represents good old-fashioned common sense. Anybody who knows that neighborhood back in there knows it from a common sense viewpoint is just no way in the world that it could support the kind of traffic that would come with a heavier, heavier, heavier traffic load. Tom, I just ask, and I'm not even suggesting we do that at this time, but if we were going to have a study of the flume area done, how involved would that be from your perspective?
Well, my recommendation has been, and is, that we should look at the entire future land use map and try and look at areas like the previous petition of Lindvet, where it's been zoned for commercial uses since 1989, and it's showing up as low-density. You know, again, these, the future land use map is not intended to be parcel-specific, but it's also not intended to be that far off either. So it does need to be a more in-depth review of it, and I think that that is something that we should possibly look at as a five-year review that's coming up, that actually is supposed to be done this year or early next year. So yes, I think we should look at the entire map. It would be in-depth. I think that that's going to involve the planning commission and staff, and possibly citizens rolling their sleeves up and taking a good look at this thing. Instead of the, you know, the couple thousand feet look, I think we need to get down and look at it on a closer scale.
And that would be my next question would be, I think we're all kind of talking around it, but does that need to be a formal proposal from this board? Or do we, does one of us need to write something up? I mean, what's the next step there? Because this is, we've talked about several of these now, and to your point, it looks like it's time.
I think what we should do is, at your next meeting, I will bring you a resolution initiating the five-year review and a review of the, and possible amendments to the flume.
And does that process typically involve external consultants, or is it handled in-house?
I hope not, because we don't have the funding. Unless you're going to contribute.
No, but it seems like every one of these types of projects, we broaden people.
I think we could, we did the last five-year review in-house. And really, the five-year, the five-year review is just kind of going through the plan and saying, okay, is it still relevant? Which, yes, I think it is. Are there things that need to be updated? Yes, one of them is the future land use map. And I know some of you, how many of you were here when we adopted the comp plan? Okay, so the majority of you, if you remember, I believe we talked about doing a more finer look at...
Yeah, yes. Well, I was just like, from the standpoint of... Speaking generally, you know, when you have a case, when you have a vision for neighborhoods, as a, for instance, and you have stuff that doesn't fit, it might be time to just true everything up and make sure that where we are is where we want to be versus a comprehensive plan, which admittedly was a pretty, yeah, pretty major overhaul.
I will say, though, that this particular item was interesting. As you were at our training workshop a few weeks ago, they talked about downzoning to maintain the character of areas. In all my years on the planning commission, we've never once downzoned anything. It's always upzoning. And so, and my only awareness as we look at the flume, and I think we definitely need to do that, is we don't want to just respond to changes in zoning that have all been up requests, and now we need to update the flume. If the flume is what we really wanted, then we need to try and preserve that. And that's independent of what we're talking about here.
I think in this case, you'd be bringing the flume more in line with the...
I agree completely. I'm just saying, though, this is an interesting topic, because we never, we never talk about going this direction. But I'm in agreement with everything that's been discussed. And what really boils down to me is the statement that this is not being brought forward by the owner of the property, and it's really hard to get past that.
And one of the things, we looked at the other zoning stuff that had been done back in the 80s, and it'd be nice to know what the rationale was back in the 60s when it was built, because I played on the construction site as a child. And it'd be interesting to see, you know, what was the actual thought process. But back in that time, traffic was such that I rode my bicycle up and down the middle of Elmwood Avenue with no fear, because there was very limited traffic. When you look at the tax maps of the city and you see how the city grew out towards the west there, there wasn't a whole bunch back there to start off with. And so they put that back there for their purposes, but it was out of the way, and there was no traffic issues. But then again, we talking 15 years ago. So it'd be nice to see what the original thought process is as well. And I think it is something we do need to look at very cautiously, because we don't have a whole bunch of low-density real estate left in the city.
Right, that's a nice piece of, a nice piece of property that, you know, in the way of developing residential communities, there's not that much like that. And most of what we see is people wanting to turn them into townhomes or apartments, and that's a, that's a piece that would not be...
What I thought was neat, because when I drove down there Monday, I sort of crept in there very quietly in my vehicle, and like, okay, this is really a quiet neighborhood, and just like looked down there, and then something caught me out of my left eye there, and I heard a deer just like jump up, like, wow. Okay, but it's just so tranquil. And so I can understand your letter, but then again, we have to do the correct processes. And I think our flume review is a necessary process.
And I appreciate the letter also. I know that if any kind of proposal comes up about this property, you know, seeing its current zoning, there's going to be a lot of discussion, and being ahead of that, I think, is important. You know, having the, having the community ahead of that, much better than reacting. We've seen a lot of reaction as opposed to being proactive, so thanks for bringing that. I don't think we're going to hold a public hearing. We can continue discussing here. I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to comment on regarding it.
I would applaud you for doing that, too. I think that you, you know, definitely kind of putting everything in writing, and, you know, I knew, read the paper, and knew that this was going to be coming up at some point in time. So you being a little head of the game, I thought it was, you know, that was a good move. But just curious what your neighbors, like, you know, what do you guys see down there? What would you, I mean, obviously, you know, it would be great if it was, you know, kept vacant land, but that probably isn't going to happen, and...
I don't think there's, I think there's a consensus amongst the neighbors, and we've had several very well-attended and vocal meetings about this, but I think people do understand that there will be some development at some time. Our thinking in addressing the city future land use map right now was to just lay a groundwork for the proper kind of development. You know, there's the possibility of homes back there with big acreage. It's 83 acres, so smaller homes in keeping with the neighborhood, it's not, it's just such a unique neighborhood. And we understand someone is going to purchase it and develop it, and much as we would love to see it all become a beautiful park...
Right, conservation, yeah.
But, but we're trying to just get ahead of, we're trying to have some say in how it's developed.
Good for you.
I mean, your homework is done for when we do start discussing the flume revisions.
For sure.
So procedurally, Tom, what you're going to do is at the next meeting, come with a proposed resolution for us to initiate...
It's our city, not one property.
Yeah, so, well, I would feel more comfortable with that as opposed to being focused, as much as I'd like to accommodate Mrs. Allen. I think, I think Tom's concern about doing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, especially when it's not based on an actual owner of the property, I think if we look at it on an overall basis, I think we're going to be, it's going to be a better process.
I agree. Hopefully, we'll have other people involved in that discussion, other people will step up and look at things around their community and say, this would be nice, and get that kind of feedback.
I think we'll have some public involvement as well.
What we're seeing from Elmwood Avenue here, people starting to show up, we have more public interaction.
Yeah.
It's also a good educational tool for the difference between zoning and the flume.
Right, right. Great, well, thank you very much. And I think with that, do we have any other business to attend to? We have a meeting coming up in two weeks, it's going to be really fun. Hopefully, we have a lot of community involvement.
He's on the popcorn.
Um, anybody have a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, any second. Great, all right. All in favor, aye. Have a good day.